I'll call this meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees to order. A quorum is present. And before we adjourn into closed session, I did just want to take a moment to recognize and acknowledge that this is the first time that the board has met since we've had two very tragic losses in our community in the last 10 days. One, of course, is Dr. Marcus Nelson, who passed away tragically on May the 15th. And the other is the loss of a student at University High School who also lost his life that day as well. So before we begin tonight, I would like to pause for a moment of silence for Dr. Nelson and Ty Felder. I hope that you will join me in keeping Dr. Nelson, his family, and Ty Felder's family and friends in your thoughts and prayers. At this time, the board will go into closed session for personnel under Texas Government Code Section 551.074. I would expect us to reconvene at approximately 7:00. Thank you. Okay. The board will reconvene in open session. We've been in closed session under personnel. No action was taken. And at this point, we will resume with our regular business meeting. All items to be discussed or voted upon tonight have been posted as required by state law. I extend a warm welcome to those present. There are a few guests, not like last time. We got a little spoiled. Where is everybody? And also to our television viewers. The board's purpose is to set goals, listen to the reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts and personnel appointments, and make policy. We're not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of Dr. Kincaid and her staff. At this time, I'll ask you to turn your cellphones to silent if you haven't done so already, and we appreciate the time you've taken to join us tonight. Next on the agenda are public comments. I haven't been informed that we have any. Nope, no public comments. So special recognitions, Mr. Woodrow.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening. Good evening, Board. Dr. Kincaid. This evening, we're going to start off with the Waco ISD Police Department. They are welcoming their newest recruit, Officer Marco Rocha, to his very first law enforcement appointment. Rocha graduated from Navarro College Police Academy, May 11th, 2021. Ooh, these monitors are turned. Yep. Yes. Okay. Apologies for that. Okay, so there is Officer Rocha. He graduated from Navarro College Police Academy in May, on May 11th, actually, and received the Academic Achiever Award with the highest grade in his basic peace officer class. He started his career with Waco ISD in the fall of 2016 as a security guard, where he found the calling to serve in a law enforcement capacity. We congratulate Officer Rocha for joining our Waco ISD Police Department. The Texas 4-H Roundup. It's qualifying an invitational event for 4-H youth who placed in a district-level roundup or signed up to compete in one of the invitational events. The Texas 4-H Roundup has around 50 diverse competitions that tie in with the many projects that 4-H has to offer. For the first time in school history, Waco High School will be represented by Antonio Majors. He is a high school junior. He competed in the Share the Fun Contest, which gives students the opportunity to showcase their talents in various categories, including choreography, dramedy, poetry, prose, band and vocals. Antonio's a cappella gospel performance earned second in vocals at the district level and qualified for competition at state. The Texas 4-H Roundup will be held June 7th to the 10th in College Station. We wish him the best of luck and look forward to hearing the results. There it is.
And if you wanted to invite him to come sing for us sometime, it'd be great.
Okay. Mental note made. Any requests? Oh, of songs. Texas History Day Awards. Waco ISD students from across four campuses competed in the 2021 Heart Texas Regional History Fair. We had 13 students earning first or second place in qualifying to compete at Texas History Day. Communication and History, the key to understanding this year's theme, provided the framework for students to select a historical topic to research. From the compilation of research, each student or group created and presented original research papers, documentaries, websites, exhibits, and performances. The 41st Annual Texas History Day was held virtually this year with six Waco ISD students receiving special awards and one student earning second place in qualifying for National History Day. This year's National History Day will be held virtually next month, June. We congratulate Daisy Barco of Atlas Academy with her junior paper, David Bode, also at Atlas Academy, a junior individual website, Lilly Kaufman, our senior individual documentary second-place winner, Crosby Davis, also of Atlas Academy, the junior group exhibit, and Addison Rourke, our junior group exhibit outstanding regional award for Heart of Texas. And of course, Lilly Kaufman is a National History Day qualifier for the senior individual documentary category. And our history fair advisors, sponsors, we thank Leslie Cannon from Atlas Academy and Amanda Jo Ponder from Waco High School. And there is Lilly Kaufman. Hidden on the B-side, Black Gospel Music of the Civil Rights Movement is her senior documentary, also awarded the Willie Lee Gay Award for the Texas Archival Collections Award. Diamond Griggs, a junior at University High School, qualified for and competed in shot put at the 2021 UIL 5A State Track and Field Meet, which was held earlier this month at the Mike A. Myers Stadium at the University of Texas at Austin. Diamond was district champion in shot put, following a second-place throw at the area meet, and then a state qualifying throw of 38 feet, 5 feet, 75 inches at regionals. Congratulations to Diamond for making it to state. Lot of recognitions this evening for the Texas Association of Future Educators at the 27th Annual Teach Tomorrow Summit. That was held in March. Taffy, the group, is a student organization that encourages students to explore careers in education, and the Teach Tomorrow Summit is a gathering of over 2,400 high school Taffy members and their teacher leaders from over 225 high schools across Texas. 16 University High School Taffy students participated in the state summit, with seven students earning special honors and 10 students advancing to the national level through the Educators Rising National Conference, and that conference is going to be held virtually next month. Congratulations to our Taffy state competitors from University High School, Fatima Barrigan, Merka Quarter, Christina Cruz, Erica Galvin, Alicia Garcia, Alan Luna, Caroline McNeil, Daniela Olvera, Yomara Ponce, Alyssa Rodriguez, and Stephanie Rubio, and a couple more. Genesis Santos, Kayla Sturdivant, Carla Suarez, Michael Wright, and Jessica Zavala. Congratulations to them. Now, it's a little different with the screen and them not here. Also, our Educators Rising National Conference qualifiers, the same group, congratulations to them. And of course, our Taffy staff sponsors from University High School, Karen Bayer, Denise Gunn, Alex Stuckey, and Denon Williams. Okay, our 2020-2021. Did I get a little ahead? We want to clap for our teachers. Sorry about that. I was just excited about this one, too. Our 2020-21 Outstanding Teachers of the Year. That process began in December when campuses nominated and selected a teacher that would represent them as their campus's outstanding teacher. 25 top educators were selected and then invited to submit an application to be considered for Waco ISD's district-wide Teacher of the Year. The announcement for both the elementary and secondary district Teacher of the Year, as well as the Virginia de Puy First Year Teachers of the Year, were made May 4th via surprise visits to the respective campuses. Our Waco ISD Principal of the Year Award was announced during an in-person principals meeting held earlier this month as well. And our annual Outstanding Teachers Ceremony, which celebrates our 25 Campus Teachers of the Year, did transition to a virtual ceremony held May 20th. Each of the four district-wide honorees were also presented with an award check from a community sponsor to celebrate their accomplishments. So here we have Lindsay Malonson from Bell Hill Elementary School, our Waco ISD Outstanding Elementary Teacher of the Year. Congratulations to Lindsay. And she received a $1,000 award sponsored by Sturteau Steel. There it is. And that's it, right there. Okay, Lacey Maryfield, from University High School, our Waco ISD Outstanding Secondary Teacher of the Year. She received a $1,000 award sponsored by Richard Carr Motors. And for our Virginia de Puy Awards, Kelly Mia from Hillcrest Professional Development School, received a $500 award sponsored by Virginia de Puy. There she is with her students. There she is again. And there is our amazing teacher, Kelly Mia. Congratulations to her for the Virginia de Puy First Year Elementary Teacher. And over at the secondary level, David Garrada from Cesar Chavez Middle School was awarded the Secondary Virginia de Puy First Year Teacher of the Year Award, as well as a $500 award sponsored by Virginia de Puy. Congratulations to Mr. Garrada. And not to be outdone, our amazing Principal of the Year, Isabel Lozano, who is here with us this evening. Congratulations to her receiving the Principal of the Year Award, and it was a very fun opportunity to surprise you in person. So congratulations. There you go. Okay, there's a check presentation. And then our Employees of the Month. Our Human Resources Department launched an Employee of the Month program in the spring of 2020, inviting staff from around the district to nominate professional and paraprofessional staff for their hard work and dedication, due to the continued high number of submissions for employees. Two professional staff members and two members of our paraprofessional support staff were surprised with the announcement that they had been selected as Waco ISD's Employees of the Month for March. Shonda Baker is a deaf education teacher at University High School, teaching multiple subjects across multiple grade levels for her students. She is an advocate, encourager, motivator, and role model for her students while also being a mentor for her colleagues. One of her many nominations noted she is a 24/7 teacher and, quote, "literally the best teacher I have ever known." While another stated she truly embodies UHS words-to-live-by, "love, serve, care." Congratulations, Shonda Baker. Mario Guevara, a PE teacher at Parkdale Elementary School, described as "the glue of Parkdale" in one of his nominations. He consistently checks on colleagues, brings joy to the school, and helps the students become self-confident. He participates in or even leads many campus activities and is not afraid to go the extra mile for his students and peers. He gives supplies and resources for students anonymously and gives positive advice. He works hard to prepare his students for the world, including recognizing their part in it and who and what they can become. Congratulations to Coach Guevara. And we have Brandon. Actually, you know what? Let's start with Marvin Casey, from a security guard at Wiley Opportunity Center, is usually the first person on campus each day and the first person you meet when you walk in the front door. During the pandemic, he even volunteered to serve as a temperature screener for staff and campus visitors. Even in sometimes highly stressful situations, Mr. Casey always keeps his cool and remains respectful. He is, quote, "generous with his time, money, and kind spirit." He's worked to assist a family with groceries when he learned of the need and has often been known to work with a student to de-escalate a situation or help them through a bad day. Congratulations to Mr. Casey. And Brandon Lee helps our desk, a help desk technician with the District Technology Services Department. And on my right, Mr. Lee right there. He is a proven asset to the team. He is always willing to assist his coworkers, all while being patient and extremely courteous with exceptional technical skills that you will see this evening, and a professional personality. He was also described as an awesome team player, punctual, and a fast learner with great leadership skills. One individual even noted, quote, "you've got a good one" with Brandon. And finally, this evening, our community partner. Waco ISD's theme for the 2020-2021 school year is Empower All, Value All. The theme reflects our mission to provide an educational foundation that empowers and values all. It celebrates learning and growing as students, professionals, and individuals, and we recognize that when individuals feel empowered and valued, their ability to overcome challenges, grow, and succeed is strengthened. However, the district also recognizes that no individual or organization can thrive and accomplish their goals and missions alone. Instead, we're best when families, employees, and the communities join together to realize our shared hopes and dreams. We are blessed to have scores of community partners who are deeply invested in our district's students, staff, and their success. Each month, the district is recognizing a community partner, and for the month of May, we have the Junior League of Waco. They've partnered with and supported our school district in many ways over the years. The organization has provided countless donations to campuses, teachers, and students, including books, back-to-school goodie bags, lap boards for pre-K classrooms, appreciation gifts for pre-K teachers and aides, and yard signs promoting our pre-K registration for the 2021-22 school year. Additionally, the Junior League of Waco has organized or supported events in partnership with Waco ISD, including the 2019 and 2021 Women's Empowerment Summits and the Pre-K Registration Roundup. They've also sponsored keynote speaker Kathy Doggett for an in-service luncheon for staff and also sponsored a virtual field trip to the Mayborn Museum through Mayborn Connect for every Waco ISD pre-K classroom. Kaitlin Remsen, president-elect of the Junior League of Waco, was accepting the award virtually. Congratulations to the Junior League, and we highly value your partnership with us. And that will wrap it up for this evening's recognitions.
Very good. Thank you. Dr. Kincaid, Superintendent's.
Okay, I have quite a bit tonight, so I apologize for that upfront, but it's good stuff. I want to start with giving you some information on the work that we're doing to develop school leaders. So this evening, you're going to hear a report from Dr. Gutierrez and Dr. White on our Aspiring Leaders Academy that was started this year. But first, I want to tell you about two other items related to the development of our school leaders. So first is our Summer Leadership Series that we've been, that we developed this spring for the summer. Beginning the week after school is out, our leaders will be participating in a series of professional development sessions, which will include book studies, thus the books in front of you. We have several books that they can choose to participate in a study on, and you can take a look at those. You're welcome to borrow these and take them home and read them, but some are general leadership. One is on diversity, another is on execution, which is a high-leverage leadership skill. And this tackling attendance challenges is one that I'll connect in just a few minutes to the work, some of the work that we're doing with our stimulus funds. But in addition to book studies, we have a half-day and full-day sessions on topics such as how to interpret Renaissance 360 data. We have a speaker from the University of Texas on diversity, equity, and inclusion, Dr. Craig Watkins, who I had the opportunity to participate in a full-day session with this past year, who's outstanding. We have a session on how to use five lab data analytics for campus decision-making. We've given the board an overview of that previously. Well, Kyle De Beer will give an overview of our new administrative guidelines that we have finished since I've gotten here. We're really proud of that. It's a lot of work. We worked through those. We'll also have job-alike share sessions for elementary and secondary principals that some of the principals are hosting on their campuses so that they can share ideas with each other. There'll be sessions for English learners and gifted learners and some more. So quite a bit going on with leadership development this summer, and I've asked our leaders to commit to several days of training. We'll end all of that at the end of July with a day and a half of training on resilience, and that's going to include a half-day speaker on working with children who've experienced trauma and how to respond from a neurodevelopmental perspective, and that what that means is just from a brain theory perspective and how to, understanding what needs to happen with the brain before learning can occur. And that session came out of, was a result of a conversation that we had with Ascension Providence about how to address mental health needs with students, and we began to learn about Dr. Bruce Perry, who actually just wrote a book with Oprah called What Happened to You? And it's all around this neurosequential development model. And so we can't get Dr. Perry because he is on the road with Oprah, but we did secure Steve Graner, who is his project, the neurosequential model in education's project director and Child Trauma Academy Fellow. And he will be leading all of our leaders through a half-day session on July 26th. Then that will be followed up with a full-day session for elementary leaders on the 27th and secondary leaders on the 28th with Dr. Julie Shell and Professor Tammy Glass from the University of Texas. And they will be talking about reframing for resilience, so building on the work that will start on the 26th. And that's going to include some time to review the design thinking methodologies that they previously learned and allow some time for them to design a pathway forward for the students for next school year to advance our goals. So I'm really excited about working with our leaders this summer. I think we have some really good things planned for them and be happy to answer any questions you have about that. Okay, the next item I have is the Holdsworth Leadership Pipeline Program. So this is at Building on Leadership, and wanted to give you a little bit of information about what the Holdsworth Center is. It's a program that was funded by Charles Butt, the chairman of HEB. It started in 2017. It's named after his mother, who was a former school teacher and a lifelong advocate for social justice. And the purpose of the Holdsworth Center is to improve the quality of public schools for Texas students through the training and development of district and campus leaders. So its sole purpose is leadership development. Waco ISD applied to participate in their very prestigious five-year leadership development program. There were 43 applicants this year. We were, we were one of the, there were more than 43 applicants. We were a finalist, one of 43 who were finalists, and we participated in an extensive interview process with their leadership team. And unfortunately, we weren't selected as one of the six school districts that they're adding this year. However, they determined that they wanted to expand leadership development opportunities and help more districts this year, so they've called and invited us and 15 other districts to participate in a new program that they're starting. It's an 18-month leadership pipeline program, and the purpose of that program is to design strategies to build leadership capacity with the goal of preparing school leaders to be ready to step up for opportunities when they arise. So we're excited about that. They want to help us define what great leadership looks like, has a focus of using a framework to build systems and structures to sustain a school leadership pipeline. So you've heard me talk about systems and structures for a while now. Three people can participate, and that would be the superintendent and two central office leaders. So Dr. Gutierrez and Deana Cornblum and I will be attending bi-monthly training sessions in Austin at the New Holdsworth Center, starting in September, I believe. So we're really excited and feel blessed to have been selected as one of the districts across the state who'll be working on school leadership with the Holdsworth Center. So HEB has really, he's really invested a lot of money. Questions about that? All right. Graduation. We have two weeks until graduation, a little later this year, but we will hold those ceremonies for the Class of 21 on Friday, June 11th, for Waco High School, and then on Saturday, June 12th, for University High School. Those events will be at 7:00 PM at the stadium, and we do look forward to celebrating all of our graduates, and I want to congratulate, two of our board members have graduates. Mr. de Puy's son, Neil, is graduating and will be, his last one, will be graduating and attending the University of Texas in the fall. Is that correct? What's he studying?
I'm not sure what they study down there.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'll ask you details by next meeting.
There you go. All right, we'll ask you next time. Congratulations.
Obviously, Carrie did not do his homework.
That's okay. And also, congratulations to the Gilleries, Mr. Keith Gillery and his wife, Tracy. Their daughter, Kiara, did I say it right, Tracy? Kiara, Kiara. Thank you. Is, will be attending the University of North Texas in the fall, and what is she studying?
Family law.
Family law, very good.
She'll be at the UT Arlington.
UT Arlington. Okay, got that wrong then. I apologize for that. My intel was wrong. I thought I had, there you go. I thought I had good intel on it. So this year, each senior will be allowed 10 guests at graduation. All of our seniors will be given 10 wristbands this year to give to their guests, and they must have those on to enter the stadium. Masks and social distancing are encouraged, and we will have a clear bag policy, I noticed in the guidelines. So I don't know if that's a typical thing for the stadium or not, but I did notice that was posted with the graduation information, so I wanted to note that. We do have seniors working until the last minute to meet the graduation requirements. That's always the case with seniors. You always have seniors working until the end. But this year is, has been especially hard to get our seniors finished up, and we do, our staff is monitoring our students closely. But with the pandemic and the disruptions of the last year and a half, we do have a big, bigger number of students who have not yet met their graduation requirements to graduate with their peers. We're working to support those students, and we hope to have most of them finished up by the end of the summer, but they will not all be graduating in, on June 11th and 12th. Students who have earned their credits but not passed EOCs may become eligible with new legislation that was just passed that essentially waives the state EOC requirements for the Class of 2021. We think that will help about 32 of our students go ahead and get across the line, so we're super excited for them. And so just wanted to mention that we're struggling to get some kids across the line this year, and we'll this year, and we'll keep working with them and try to get them finished up in the summer. We just had kids that didn't earn those credits this year, and it's been really tough. So look for some more information from me on graduation in the coming days. I'll send you a seating chart for the stage and some other details. Questions about graduation? Okay. Summer school, short and brief on this one. Summer school for elementary and middle school students will be June 15th through the, through July 8th, that's Monday through Thursday, from 8 to 1 with breakfast and lunch included. Our elementary students will receive two and a half hours of literacy instruction and an hour and a half of math instruction each day. Middle school will also focus on literacy and math, but may have a slightly different schedule. Summer school for our high school students will focus on credit recovery, and will include a morning and an afternoon option, so we allow flexibility for our students. So that's coming. We had a hard time staffing summer school this year, but I think we just about got it taken care of. Our teachers are tired, so it's really hard to get them to want to come back and teach an extra few weeks, especially after getting out late. So, but we're getting them signed up. And then finally, I want to talk about what the fall looks like, and we've spent a great amount of time talking about this as a team, and as we've reflected, you know, on what school has looked like for us since March of 2020, it's clear that there's a difference between in-person and remote instruction. It's just not the same. We've learned, like many districts across the country, that we can't support other students as effectively when they aren't with us in person. And so because of that, and it shows in their graduation, that, you know, attendance and academic achievement have suffered, and our remote learners have struggled the most, and they've struggled to pass courses and to earn credits. Our achievement on our standardized assessment is lagging behind and further behind for students who have been remote. Now, the state has hinted of some stricter guidance for remote instruction next year, but they have not communicated what they will require or what they will prohibit for next year. So there's still question mark for all of our planning at this point, and we know that any decisions we make may have to be adjusted based on the rules of the state. However, I do want to communicate that we are planning for all students in Waco ISD to return to in-person instruction for the fall, and we are not planning to offer remote instruction. So that decision is driven by our desire to meet the needs of our students, but also we think that's what's best for our teachers. They've clearly struggled this year to provide both in-person and remote instruction, and it's taken a toll on them as they've had to work additional hours and experienced great distress over the achievement of their students. So with that in mind, and with the plan to have our students back on campus in the fall, we're working with our partners from Ascension Providence, as well as McLennan County Public Health District and other school districts to create opportunities for vaccinations this summer. Right now, students who are 12 and older are eligible for the Pfizer vaccine, and the Moderna vaccine may also be authorized for that age group soon. So we're cautiously optimistic that some younger students may be able to be vaccinated by the end of the summer as well. And I'd like to point out that the state, not individual school districts, determine the vaccination requirements. All those shots your kids get every year, that's not our decision. That's the state's decision, and we do not expect that the state will require the COVID-19 vaccination for students. We think it's important for our students and our employees to be vaccinated if they're eligible, and we expect to continue to need to quarantine students and staff who are exposed to COVID in the fall. However, in most cases, those who are vaccinated won't have to be quarantined. So that's it. We're planning to have in-person instruction in the fall. A couple of other things I'll add to that, that we won't have emergency leave for COVID for our employees in the fall. Any employee who's out for quarantine or illness will use their personal or state leave in the fall. And of course, you know, any student who is out will provide support for them. Of course, we want, we want everyone to get vaccinated so that they can come back to school if they're exposed. And then finally, a little bit about masks. You all know the governor issued an executive order prohibiting the use of masks after June 4th. We don't expect that to change at this point. We believe masks will be optional in the fall. So some of the things we put in place this year that we expect to continue are the additional handwashing, sanitizing stations, and more frequent cleaning. But otherwise, it, we look to have a fairly normal school year in the fall, and that's kind of good news. Comments about that or questions? Unless the state throws us a curveball.
That would never.
That would never happen.
All right. Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing. So I'll close the meeting of the board and open a public hearing to discuss the district's proposed use of the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief, or ESER, III funding under the American Rescue Plan. And I saw Dr. Wilson over there and Dr. Kinnahan.
Okay, I'm going to present, but Dr. Wilson is right there, and she's been, she's been the expert on the ins and outs of the ESER funds and has done a beautiful job. She's retiring this summer. We're going to miss her, but I'm thankful, I'm thankful she was still here to help get this organized for us. So I've thrown a lot of ideas at her, and she has gathered a lot of ideas from people, and we've put together what we think is a really good plan. This is a public hearing to discuss Waco ISD's use of the funds, and we have been working on this for several weeks now and have solicited feedback from a number of sources, started with our principals in all of our budget meetings that we had to plan for next school year, and really dreaming if there was anything that you could do for your students, anything that we needed, what would that be? And so we started to collect those ideas and build out this budget. Then we took it to QDAC. I think we've had questions on our technology survey, and we have had a parent group meet also to talk about this, and then I think there's a planned survey that's going out for our students. So after putting it all together, I asked my team, what do we call in this? What's the big summary? If someone asks you, what are we doing with our stimulus funds, what are you going to say? And so I think it was Kyle that said, helping kids and improving libraries. So tonight, I want to tell you about how we're helping kids and improving libraries, and then a few other things to go with it. So this is, we did get a specific allocation from the state, but this is a grant program, and we do have to submit an application to receive our funds, and we do intend to do that next week, mid to late next week. So I want to again thank Robin for all of her work on making sure that application gets put together. We have until September 30th of 2024 to spend the funds, and then the, there's an additional 120 days to finalize expenditures, so this will run through January of 2025. So I've been thinking of this as a three-year plan. So in these initiatives, if we're adding staff, I've been thinking, okay, these are three-year, this is a three-year program that we have moving forward. Next slide. Congress passed three stimulus bills to address the pandemic, and each one included funding for schools, ESER. Our allocation under ESER I was approximately $5 million. However, the state used most of those funds to close a gap, a budget gap, and we only ended up receiving about $400,000 in new funding from ESER I, with the remaining money, 4.5 million of ESER I being offset by a reduction in state funding for our schools. Our share of ESER II is approximately 22.1 million. However, we haven't received any information about how this money will be distributed to school districts or whether any of it will be offset by reductions in state funding. So what we're talking about tonight is ESER III, and our allocation is approximately $49.9 million, of which the state has released for us to make application for $33.3 million of it, and they have not yet released the 16.6 million. Something else to note here is that we have allocated 4.6 million of the 33.3 million to Transformation Waco, so that's a per-student allocation for them to make decisions about how they want to use that money in their five schools. We've reviewed our plans with them and invited them to participate in all of the efforts that I'll be talking about tonight, and in some areas, their plans will look similar to ours, and in others, they've made different decisions about how to spend ESER III funding. So tonight, I am going to talk about non-Transformation Waco schools, Waco ISD. Next slide. So as we put together all of our ideas and categorized them, we came up with nine different categories of spending of those funds, and so here those are on the next slide. There's a bar graph showing how much money is allocated for each of those. Some of those are tightly related and could have been lumped together or separated out even further. So interventions are the biggest portion of the money, and by interventions, I mean academic interventions. And then the next highest level of category would be social, emotional, learning, and mental health, and then you can see the rest of those there. On the next slide, you will see, I wanted to, I wanted to drill down just a little bit into our spreadsheets so that you could see how much money would actually be allocated at the campus level for campuses to spend. We have provided funding for after-school tutorials, instructional materials, family engagement, transportation for tutorials, which is above our regular transportation, high school, night school, and our other activities. We know our high school students are going to need lots of opportunities to catch up on their credits. And then attendance activities. So you, I mentioned this tackling attendance, tough attendance issues. That's one of our issues, and we'll be having, having our leaders who are participating in this book study this summer develop a plan for the use of their stimulus funds that were allocated to them. So that's what it looks like at the high school level. You can see that's quite a bit of money that will go straight to those campuses. Next slide shows our two middle schools, Caesar Chavez and Tennyson Middle School, based on student enrollment. So Tennyson, Caesar Chavez, excuse me, is just slightly larger than Tennyson. And then on the next page, you can see the elementary allocations. So pretty exciting to think that our campuses will have the ability to fund all of those things for their students. Next section is interventions. Yes?
Before you, before you go forward, I'm just curious, on the, on the high schools and middle schools and maybe beyond, but the way it's broken down on campus allocations, it looks like instructional materials and family engagement. Is that front-end loaded for the 21, 22 school year as opposed to spread out for the three-year period?
It is. So like on Waco High School, that 89, 596, we just put it in 21, 22, but they have three years to spend it. Yep, great question. But then you see tutorials, they have an allocation for each year.
Okay.
Yep.
Oh, I see the asterisk.
Mm-hmm, there's an asterisk there, yes. And same thing for, you know, the high school, night school, where it says night school, that could, you know, we, we believe will be, we want to pay teachers to work in the evenings or come up with something creative to assist our students, so we put money in for pay to do that. That's a yearly allocation, so there's a lot of money going into high school credit recovery there, and same thing for attendance activities.
Thank you.
You bet. Largest portion of funding is for interventions, and like I said, that's for academic interventions, particularly literacy and mathematics, although high school funding includes all subjects for credit recovery. So if you dive into interventionists, we will add an additional academic intervention teacher at each elementary school. That's going to support the literacy plan that we've been working on and add to the interventionists that we've already designated for next year. We've worked hard, my team has worked hard to reallocate Title I and state comp resources to have pull-out reading and math teachers at the elementary level to support students who are behind. So we were able to provide two of those with our regular federal entitlements, and then we're adding a third position with the stimulus funds. So each of our elementary schools will have three, which is really great to, to work with our students who need it. We're also adding three credit, three reading recovery teacher, teacher leaders, sorry, and they will be trained in year one in reading recovery at Texas Women's University, and they will be going to our three elementary schools who received the lowest accountability rating in 2019. That was South Waco Elementary, Mountain View Elementary, and Dean Highland Elementary. And then once they go through the year-long training model, then they will be supporting, dividing our elementary campuses among them and supporting teachers in learning the reading recovery process. But we need to, we need to build them up first, and so we're helping kids with interventions. The next category, second largest category, where we want to help kids is with social, emotional, learning, and mental health, and we have been focused on resiliency, and we know that our kids won't learn unless we connect with them, and we also help them to regulate their emotions and control their behaviors. So go forward one more. So our plan has us working in several areas here. The first is taking, is adding additional counselors. So last year, we did a staffing study with the Texas Association of School Board, who identified the need to add additional counselors at Cedar Ridge, Crestview, Kendrick, South Waco, Caesar Chavez, and Tennyson. So this money will allow us to do that in all of those locations for the next three years, and we're really excited about that. We have also planned to add two social, emotional learning coordinators in the district. One is, will be paid with stimulus funds, and the other will be paid with our federal title funds, I think that's Title IV. And those two positions are going to work directly with our school counselors and campus leaders to develop strategies to support the well-being of our students and to develop environments with trusting and collaborative relationships, so culture, those two positions working directly with counselors. We've also included funding in this category for mental health, trauma, and resiliency, and, you know, we recognize that our students have needs in this area. Last year and a half has been hard on all of us, especially our kids, and we know we have kids that haven't been in school. So there's going to need to be a lot of work on mental health. We think there's going to need to be a lot of work on behavior management. So there's funding for both, and you can see we've invest, we're investing $3.8 million to to support our students in that regard. Helping kids, right? Helping kids. Yeah, that's a great, we've got, the positions are posted. And Dr. Gutierrez is working on it, aren't you? Yeah, she's got it. We hope we can find all of the counselors that we need, our kids need. That's the question, right? That's a great question. So they are three-year positions. And then we either have to eliminate the positions after three years or we have to shift funding to match our priorities. So we'll have to make some decisions about what we currently have that we want to keep or what we want to change to continue with this work. So that's the hardest part of any kind of a grant program, is you get to dream with grants and have the money to do it. But at some point, the grant money goes away. So we're going to move forward with it and then make, we'll face that when we get there. In the category of technology, we're going to continue with what we've done. So we, you know, we had outdated technology hardware before the pandemic. We had begun to work on it. The board had approved a replacement cycle plan just in February, just prior to the pandemic hitting. And then we got money from the state and the government to help us with that. So we've really come a long way with technology. But this money will help us to stay caught up over the next three years and we'll keep that replacement cycle going. And, you know, we've learned how to use it. Now we want to get better at using those tools with our kids. Improving our libraries. This is, I'm excited about all of this. But I'm really excited about libraries because I really didn't know how we were going to take care of all of this, all of these libraries. They're in desperate need of some improvements. And I'm really excited about the opportunity to move forward. In fact, I wanted to share a story. When I walked into Dean Highland Elementary the first time, it was the first campus I visited here. And the first thing I saw was a library. And I said, there aren't enough library books in that library. So we need to invest in our libraries. And this plan will provide books. We've allocated about $1.5 million in books for libraries. We've allocated another $1.5 million for furniture to improve the environment of those libraries and modernize them. And then we've included some training and contracted services money to work with, to get some support for staff. And then also to perhaps use our designer with O'Connell-Roberson Expert, designer to help us with planning out the space and selecting furniture so that we do a really nice job of pulling that all together. So that's the plan. I will tell you, if we get the next 16 million, I already am thinking about staffing for libraries. If we're going to invest $3 million, $3.5 million in libraries, then the next thing we ought to do, if we can and have the money, is to provide appropriate staffing for those libraries.
Yeah, Dr. Kinnaman, so as you approach that project or that piece, do you find that a square footage in the libraries is adequate to facilitate the? Okay.
Yeah, so that, all of our schools are different. Some have larger libraries, some have, like Kendrick Elementary, I see Ms. Lozano has a very tiny library. It will be very difficult to do a lot in there. But we will do what we can and try to help as many libraries as we can. Now, we put money in for every library to receive books. We may, you know, if we make some decisions about moving forward with a bond program that includes Kendrick, we may not want to tackle furniture and the space there. We may invest in another campus in terms of furniture. So we can make decisions like that. But books are definite for every school library. And we've allocated that. I think we included, Robin, for all the Transformation Waco schools as well in that allocation. Yes?
Oh, wait, two questions. Mr. Gilery and then Mr. Davis.
Yeah, I'm excited about, okay. So I think we need to have books in every classroom in addition to the libraries. So we, I did have classroom libraries in here, but we went over. So I've saved that for the next 16 million. And to add $2,000 worth of paperback books probably to every elementary classroom would be about $1 million. So that will be in the next set of funding should we get it. And then I want to add high school in there too. I don't know if you see Dina. But they say you should have 2,000 books in every classroom for kids at their fingertips to touch and read. So I want to shore up the libraries and then add books in the classroom, too.
Mr. Davis?
My question was just about maker spaces in the libraries. Is that part of the furniture or is that not included?
Yeah, that's a hard one. So maker spaces are really creative and innovative. And they're hard to navigate. And I think that would take some staffing to really pull that off. With some campuses that are interested, we probably could pilot some and use some of this money with, you know, the furnishings to do that. I'm not sure we'd want to do it at every single campus. But certainly, we could look at that. They take really, teachers that really understand how to do that, too. They're hard. You have to have somebody who can really pull it off. Yep.
Good question.
Any other questions about libraries? All right. Next is facilities and HVAC. So these funds can also be spent on facilities, specifically improving air quality is one of the things that was mentioned in the guidelines for the grant. So we've allocated $3 million in this portion of the funding just to work on HVAC at our campuses. Pretty simple. Then special education would be the next category. And that's been an area of focus for us. Is Charlotte here? Charlotte's here, our Special Executive Director of Special Education. I want to congratulate her and her team for the work that they're doing for the first time in over three years. Waco ISD does not have a corrective action plan with the State of Texas for special education. That's a really big deal. So I want to thank her for that. But she knows, as do I, there's still work to be done. And we still have instructional work to do with our kids. And so what this stimulus funding will do, 1.8 million is most of it for special ed is for staffing to help kids in the classroom. So we need to add resource teachers at the high school level. We need an LSSP and some other positions that I probably can't talk to off the top of my tongue. But 1.8 million dollars for special education students. Next section is curriculum and professional development. And that is just what it says. These are above the allocations for the campuses. There's 1.1 million there to buy literacy kits for intervention teachers, science STEM scopes kits for elementary teachers, all kinds of just instructional and professional development materials, along with some training. Next section is family engagement. And this is about $600,000, which is, most of which has been, is going directly to the campuses. And this really came out of conversations with board members who have asked me about PTAs and PTOs and what we're doing to engage families. And I know that many of our campuses struggle to keep a PTA going. And so there's money here for activities to engage parents at the campus level. Also heard about family engagement in United Way's Child Wellbeing Report that they just put out locally. So that's a good amount of money for campuses to be able to pull families in and do things with them.
Would this be to add like additional family support specialists on campus? Or is this, how is this?
This is campus, this is not for personnel, except there are two positions in here that are grant-funded currently that are going away, that we've kept in here for the Parents as Teachers Program. But there are no other personnel positions in here. So this would be money to have a reading night on your campus and feed your parents and pass out books and that kind of thing. And whatever the campuses want to come up with, then we can help them design that. And that never happens. No one ever gives you money to do that with your families, right? Usually, your PTA raises the money to do those kinds of activities. So it's a really big deal to have that kind of funding to do something innovative with parents. And then finally, safety and COVID, just a small amount there, $200,000. We want to keep the float nurse that we added this year with COVID. And then we want to have some funds for extra-duty pay to run vaccination clinics. And with that, I'll take questions from the board and the public.
It's a public hearing, so anyone here is welcome to ask a question. And any member of the board? No? Okay. It's really exciting.
I'm very excited about it. I have had the opportunity to write grants and dream big, but never this big. So this is huge for our kids, and we want to help them. And we have been very thoughtful with this plan. We welcome any feedback. So if anyone wants to email me with any other feedback before we submit the application or even after that, because we hope we'll get the next round of money, I'd love to hear it. So thank you.
I think you started with this, but this is a product.
Your mic.
This is a product of many consultations with your campus leadership principals. This is what they're telling you they need.
Yes, so we had budget meetings with every principal. And I was in those meetings and said, okay, we're going to get money with the stimulus. What is it that would make a difference for your kids? And so I took notes and we began to build a spreadsheet with those notes. And then I added to it. And we presented it to QDAC. And we've had a lot of conversation about it. There's been a lot of feedback in this. And I think Mrs. Lozano could attest to that. But we've really tried to get the input from the staff on it. And we need interventions for our kids. We don't have all the right spaces for those personnel to serve our kids, but we're going to figure it out. And that may mean we buy some furniture and build little cubbies for our teachers to work with kids in small group instruction. But there's been a lot of thought and a lot of work, a lot of feedback for this plan.
So is our emergency classroom management and restorative justice, those are programs that train us for like the behavior staffs on the campus? Or is it for teachers in general?
Those are systems. So emergency, we had May Kaufman from Emergency do an evaluation of our behavior system that we presented to the board. We could find that and get that to you. But we want to train all of our campuses. That includes all staff on how to manage student behaviors.
Gilery?
Hi.
I think they're probably going to want you at the mic. Can y'all hear her or does she need to be at a mic? No, okay.
When the stimulus is exhausted, how do you continue the programs, the interventions, the staffing, the positions? Where does the money then come from to continue what you started?
Yeah, that's the question with grant funding. You either have to end the personnel or you have to find a way to pay for it moving forward. So we will have to make some decisions about our priorities as we move forward. So if we want to keep that extra third interventionist that we're adding, then we may have to give up something else that we're staffing to pay for it. And so it's a give and a take in your budget. We won't have the ability to keep all of these positions. It's a lot of money. But we know that we can use it for three years. And then if it's important to us, then we'll find a way to keep it within our systems. Might mean giving up something.
Thank you.
You bet.
For the additional 16 million, the only plan so far is maybe library staff?
I have a spreadsheet started for the additional 16 million. We have those classroom libraries that Mr. Gilery mentioned. Library staff training for administrators. There was some training that I want to send my leaders to at Columbia University for diversity and literacy. So I've put some money in that. And Dr. Wilson probably has a spreadsheet. But a list of things that we're, you know, we may put some more HVAC money in that next 16 million. Say it again? Facilities. Social workers. We contemplated social workers for Wiley. So that's still on the list. And we're just kind of adding to it. And we'll prioritize that and bring that back at the next round. Yes, ma'am?
I have two questions. My first question, could you repeat the amounts of funding for the parent engagement per campus?
It's on those charts that I presented. It's based on a per-student allocation. So if you go to those slides, family engagement, you could see that at the high school level, we have $37,000 at Waco High School, $31,000 at University High School. Middle schools have about 16,000 to 17,000. And then elementaries are based on their size of their campuses. So the largest is, our largest elementary campus is Bell's Hill. They are allocated $13,887. Okay, that sounds good.
And Lake Air Montessori, it says $10,000.
Oh, that's where she is.
That's where she is. Yeah, she's PTA president.
Okay, so that was my next question. So as far as with that funding, will that funding have to be separate from the PTA funding? Or can the administrator on the campus push some of that funds through the PTA to help, so that we can host some of those, so that we can host some of those things?
Yeah, so the campus can use the money to hold the events. PTA can partner with the campus. The accounting has to be separate. So you can't mingle the money, I mean, you can mingle the money by putting the event together. But the accounting has to be separate.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So it's a great opportunity to do something big. Yeah, glad you're here. Yes, transformation is, I think, 16% of the total allocation, which is in alignment with, Cheryl, help me out here. Yep.
You sure? Lots of three decimals.
So basically, they're getting the same amount of money. They just get to decide how they're going to use it.
That's correct. So it's based on student allocations.
Lots of good questions. And Mr. DePuy? No?
Well, thank you. It was exciting to get to plan, to spend the money. And we look forward to doing some good things for our kids.
As Dr. Kinnaman mentioned, she's been leading up to this point for a long time. Now she's getting money to spend on it, so.
Yeah. Helping kids and improving our libraries.
So one question, and I'll follow up with Mr. Davis's comment about Transformation Waco. When you look at these campus allocations, so the communication about the difference in why the transformation zone campuses will not be receiving similar funds in each of these areas, that's something that we're going to have to give thoughtful consideration. that's something that, um, we're gonna have to give thought, thoughtful consideration to. I think it might be confusing to the community and parents if, um, let's say Lake Air Montessori's PTA has the ability, along with campus leadership, to conduct some events because of this funding, but yet, um, the, the PTA at Carver does not because of different decisions that are made by Transformation Waco. I don't know that, how we exactly solve that problem just by communicating.
Well, I think on, uh, some of these categories, on these allegations, uh, allocations, not allegations, allocations, they have, um, chosen to do some of things, of these things. Whether or not they've done them at the same level we have, I'm not sure. Um, but they followed our, they followed our lead on most of these campus-specific allocations, I believe.
Great, okay, good. Do you know, are they on the same criteria that we established ours?
I'm not sure, I can, I can figure that out.
I think so, just, just so that, I, I think the board needs to have the information in the event people in the community are curious why there are differences. And so we're just have some level of basic understanding and have your phone number, so we can have them call you.
Remember she's retiring, but we'll-
Oh, well.
But we've got the spreadsheet.
We can find her at home, she probably remembers.
We've all been working on the spreadsheet. Well, I do know they have, um, some posit, grant money that is going away. And so that they are spending some money to keep some of the things that they have in place. Um, and I mentioned, we, you know, we're doing that with our Parents as Teacher Program as well. Um, so there may be some differences. I just don't, you know, I'm just not, um, as well-versed on it.
I got one last question. So before this money runs out, we have three years of this going on. Will somebody be looking for additional funding to keep funding these things? Or is it just after the three years, we have to cut something if we're gonna keep this? Are we gonna actively be searching for more funds before that time comes?
If we find a grant that it will pay for some of these things, we'll, we'll apply for it. Um, but I've never seen a grant for $33 million. Just, you don't-
At least some small parts of it.
Sure, sure, yeah.
If we have another pandemic, maybe we'll-
Yeah, we don't want that.
No.
No, thank you. It, it truly is a blessing to get to, to do these things, um, over the next three years. And, um, we think it'll make a difference for our kids.
All right, thank you. I'll close the public hearing, reopen the board meeting. And the next item on the board's agenda is consent. Uh, items A through O. Uh, I'm not aware that any member of the board had, uh, would like to pull any item for further discussion, but-
Madam President-
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve the, the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. I'll entertain a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cordewing. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously, all right.
Can I ask you one last question about one of the items?
Of course you can.
Okay, who thought it was gonna be okay to put corrugated in? Then we have to end up with concrete. I told you, Susan. That's kind of towards Cheryl, I'm not sure, is one of your building guys here?
It's a change-
Alex, it's a change order item. Alex, change order item. Can you just speak to the-
It just kind of surprised me that something that-
No, it's Alex.
Oh, there he is, okay. No, I'm just, did the city change their mind at some point on?
Well, actually, that's, uh, it was city review, so those came in late. And that's where the change in the, uh, some of the material was made. And that's where you see the change order.
Yeah, no, I, plainly, reinforced concrete is gonna be more expensive than corrugated. I'm just wondering why we thought we could get away with that originally, but it, it's okay. All right, I won't take any more time on that, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it's good, it's good for the project.
Yeah. It won't sink.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, all right. Item 10, review and discuss the Academy for Aspiring School Leaders, Dr. Gutierrez and Dr. White. I don't know that I've actually, that's maybe the first time I've said Dr. White.
Dr. White.
Yeah. Not because, um, for people who haven't been here, it's because it is a new title, so congratulations.
Good evening, Madam President and Board of Trustees. We're excited to be here with you tonight to talk about the Academy for Aspiring School Leaders that we launched this year. First of all, um, in Waco ISD, we have a real commitment to building the capacity of our leaders. And that you'll find in our District Improvement Plan. It's our goal number eight. And, uh, so we decided that we needed to build the capacity of our campus leaders by building out a pipeline. As we know, we will have vacancies for assistant principals and principals over time. And we want to have a strong bench and we also want to hire from within. Our, our partnership is really between the Human Resources Department, the Curriculum Department, that includes the Professional Development Department, and our aspiring school leaders who, who you'll find, uh, work at all of our schools at all three levels across our district. And we have several amazing leadership coaches. We have Mrs. Cornbloom and we have Mrs. Logan, they're all in the room today. Dr. White, uh, Mrs. Carradine, our Executive Director of Human Resources, and myself. We're all, um, previously, uh, principals and we've walked the walk. So we really have, uh, and we loved our role as principals and believe in this work. And, and that's why we all partner together to, to grow our leaders. So why is this work important? The only part on this slide that I really want to emphasize is that principals really matter. And I've talked to you before about that principals have one of the hardest jobs in this school district. It's superintendent and the principals. We all have hard jobs, but the principals really have a hard job. And a recent study that was, uh, just published from the Wallace Foundation in February of this year found that there was, uh, no greater investment with a higher ceiling on its potential for return than a successful effort to improve school leadership, specifically principal leadership. And one of the parts, uh, one of the findings in this study is the effect of, of school leaders. In fact, in this, they found that school leaders almost have the same effect on student achievement as teachers. And then some will argue in the study that the, uh, the effect is really greater. Uh, the effect principals have is really greater because their impact is greater. Like, they might be running a school with 500 kids, 1,000 kids, 2,000 kids, when you talk about our high schools. And so that work is really important because teachers are having the greatest impact but on 21 kids or maybe 140 kids at the high school. But when you think about the impact of a principal, that's what really makes this matter. And we believe it's very important. There have been some shifts. I can tell you, I've been out of the principalship for about a dozen years now. And not back when I was a principal, but even before then, you know, you could have, you could have this charismatic leader. You could have someone who kept the school clean and kept it organized and orderly and safe. And all those things are important, and they're still very important today. But it's so much more than that. This role is very complex. And we could pull any of our principals in front of you today and they will tell you how hard the job is. And, and I've spoken with some principals who have been in their role for over a decade and they'll say, this has just gotten harder and harder and, and I can see it. Uh, but today, we have, we, we have strategic evaluation systems, like the teacher incentive allotment. That, that does, um, add some demands to principals with the coaching and, and, uh, tracking data and having data meetings and being able to dive into instruction to the depth that, uh, will help a teacher grow. So all this is very complex. Um, our equity work, you know, that landscape has changed. There's, there are demands because it's the right work to do to, to move that work forward. Um, and they're just really having to juggle so much. And, and you know, just times have changed. And in the future, we just know, we, we, we can't predict the future, but we do know that we've got to build the capacity of our leaders to, to be ready to manage change and to continue to grow. And, and building our bench, we think, is, is one of the, the best ways to do this. So I'm gonna turn it over to my colleague, uh, Dr. White.
Thank you so much. I so enjoy working with, um, our team. Um, the interview process was very intentional. Um, we wanted to make sure that we had candidates that if we had an opening, that they had the certification already, so that they could go into our, um, assistant principal and principal pool. So part of our interview process, they had to submit a resume, a writing sample. And, um, we also, after that screening, we did additional interviews because we only had five sessions. So we had to really think, what can we focus our energy and time on? What does our system really need? And so we decided to screen for the, um, our candidate's ability to demonstrate their strong instructional knowledge around the systems that we've already implemented, so that we could spend the remainder of our time around systems and leadership competencies and skills and things like that. So that's the way we hack the system. And, um, we notified the candidates in February. And so, um, and the, the sessions will end in June, but they won't really quite end because a cohort has been formed and they are communicating with each other really well. And we'll continue to have communication with them and invite them to co-lead things with us. So we'll continue until we get these leaders in a seat. So, um, our intentions of the program, I told you, we wanted to focus on, um, personal development. So we took some time to really think about, how do we get to where we are today? So we looked at our, our stories on, um, how we came to be, from even how we were raised and where we came from, because that does influence your leadership. Because every, it all shows up to work. You know, we bring our full selves to work. And so we, um, took strengths finders and we found, identified our strengths. They audited their, um, leadership competencies and created personal, professional, professional development plans. And, um, we also really focused on just various competencies and systems. And everything that we do in Waco ISD now is through a, a equity lens. And so much of our work was based on research-based practices and what we know about addressing, um, the opportunity myth. Uh, in, in, in a nutshell, it's a lot to the opportunity myth. It's an amazing article and study, but it's about, we have to raise the expectations for student learning in the classroom. Because most of the time, um, our students from, um, black and brown, the, the more black and brown students in a, um, in an organization, usually the lower the expectations are. So we're trying to disrupt that and raise our expectations for kids. And so that was rooted in all of our work. And we had hard conversations around hiring and all kinds of other things that evolved. So our leaders, um, represented the diversity of our district and we were very proud of that. We had two leaders from, um, Waco High and one from university. We had three represent CCMS and two from Indian Springs. And the remainder of the leaders came from, um, our middle, our elementary schools. So we had representation from Cedar Ridge, um, Bells Hill, South Waco, um, Lake, Lake Air, and Crestview. And so we, um, we had, we, since this is the beginning of the program, we, we differentiated when we needed to based on their individual needs. But we had a teacher who's interested in becoming an assistant principal or an instructional specialist. We had instructional specialists who are interested in becoming eight assistant principals. And we have assistant principals who are interested in becoming principals. And we had one dean. So we were glad, um, very proud of the representation that we had in our aspiring leaders group. So as you can see, um, we actually continued to try to honor their voices. We wanted to be the model of what we want to see our leaders be in Waco ISD. So we, um, surveyed our leaders, you know, after class. So we had interviews and just check-ins. And here are some of the things that they've said, you can read on the screen what they've said around, um, the program so far and how it's influenced them. But, um, what I would like for you to pay attention to is the pattern of self-reflection. That, that's the biggest takeaway, that they're really reflecting on who they are, how they show up to work, what can they do to, um, go to the next level, level and, um, close the gap with their own leadership? Because I think throughout the program, what I see is that they learn that the way that they make other people better is by making themselves better. So that was just really nice to see. So, we've, it's a, it's a short period of time, but we have, um, we've had, we have already seen some great results of the program. Um, our, they've, like, again, they've self-reflected, they have personal leadership plans. They know their competencies and skills. They have actually, um, so each class, they had to do a deliverable, some work to demonstrate their learning because we're not just talking about it. And so one thing they had to go back and do is do, um, a root cause analysis on their campus to get to a real problem of practice. And they, and that'll be reflected in our campus improvement plans this year. So they, they wrote it, wrote the strategies, engaged, um, voices on their campus. So I'm really glad that we'll see that work. And they have committed to actually not just writing it down, but implementing it and, and staying true to that. So we're proud of that. So, and we've had several, um, of our leaders interview and they've successfully made it into our Waco ISD principal and assistant principal pools. So some of these leaders, we have some openings, so we hope to see some of these leaders soon. We'll see. So, um, the long-term impact is, you know, again, we recently started this program, but, um, what I often say is, once you learn something, you can't unlearn it. And so they will take what they've learned in this program and it'll influence the work that they do in the future. And so, um, our goal is to continue to develop the capacity of all the people in our organization because we're stronger together. We, we need to not have pockets of excellence, but we need to have a system of excellence. And so therefore, um, around instruction, around our organization, around organizational learning, and it's around observable things that can be taught. There are skills and there are competencies and it's evidence-based. And so I think long-term, we'll see the results of developing the leadership capacity because there is a desire line. There are peop, there, I had one said, I don't want it to stop. We have one more session and I don't want it to end. And I said, well, it won't really end. That's just, that's just in our minds. So we just continue to do the work. If you need anything, any of us are available to help. And, um, we have, um, the leadership coaches, we've been on-site with the aspiring leaders on their campuses, um, from doing classroom walks to helping coaching them on their plans and just having those check-ins. And so we want to continue those types of relationships, authentic, real relationships, um, you know, on the spot. So, um, I think that's about it for that. And do you-
Mr. Sykes has a question.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, Dr. Gutierrez and Dr. White, I, uh, I want to thank you for molding and shaping this program because we're getting ready to go in and discussion of, uh, district vision, mission, and goals. And as you pointed out, this is part of our goal process at the board level. It's hard to prioritize all those goals, but as we talk about district improvement plans, campus improvement plans, and how we intertwine all these things to produce the results that we want as a district, this is a very vital part. And I don't want to diminish the need for the other items in our goals, but you have really done an outstanding job of moving this forward because leadership is the key to get to all the other elements that we talk about as a board and as a district and all the way through the campus level. So thank you for taking on this initiative. Uh, you know, I, I, I think the, the results will speak for themselves. You've already shown some good results. And, uh, I'm, I'm very thankful of what the work is, the work that you have done and the, uh, I, I guess really, that's important to me, to continue this dialogue of leadership going forward. So thank you.
Mr. Gilary?
Yeah, so, it sounded like an amazing program. And we talked a little bit earlier about existing principals and some of their struggles. And I didn't see any existing principals going through this program.
So this, oh, thank, so we have a plan, we have a strategic plan that we are, we're starting with the summer. Um, so the summer training is even built around some of the competencies that we know that some of our existing principals have. But we have a year-long professional development plan for our leaders, where we have leadership learning days. So sometimes professional learning happens in our principals' meetings, but then we have dedicated time for professional learning days that we'll have, um, where we provide information and give the opportunity for our principals to learn together and collaborate together around problems of practice. And then, um, as we engage with our TIA, our Teacher Incentive Allotment Grant, we have to be reliable and valid with our evaluations. Grant, we have to be reliable and valid with our evaluations. And so there's work around that, too, for us to get calibrated as a district, but also to do some internal calibrations. So that's part of our long-term PD plan. And then we also engage in onsite coaching. And so we'll be continuing to do that, too, alongside our principals. And we've already engaged in that, but it was slightly interrupted with COVID. But we were doing some summer planning to see how can, to identify where are we right now, and then to revamp for next year and continue on with those plans that we already had in place.
So Ms. Cornbloom and Dr. White, once they got here, started data-driven instruction training with administrators, and then action coaching training. And they have divided principals, and they're actively coaching principals, as well as contracting with the Educational Service Center to help us, because we have a lot of principals. So every principal has a coach that's working with them on instructional initiatives. And so there's quite a bit of work that's happened already.
There is a desire for them to work together a little bit more. So we're trying to see how we can build, like, the principal PLCs a little bit more, so they can exchange thoughts together. So we were starting some of that work this summer with the Java-like groups. But then we want to see how we can maximize the opportunity for them to get together and share ideas. That's what they are asking for, too.
I see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis.
Yes, I just, first of all, thank y'all for y'all's work. I love everything that y'all are doing. I think it's needed. I would kind of second what Mr. Gilery said, and retention, I think, is an issue in the district when it comes to our principals. So I think it'd be great for some of our existing principals to get some of this training. I also was going to ask, what are we doing to keep these people, after they go through this training, they have all the certifications they need, what's stopping them from going to another district? If we don't have a position for them open, what, how do we keep these great people in our district?
That's a great question. So there's a number of opportunities in leadership roles. So they can move into instructional specialist roles. They can move into any of our opportunity culture schools with those leadership roles, and assistant principal roles, and then the principal roles. And there are also district leadership roles that, as they come open. So I always, I believe that you're a leader regardless of what role you're in. But I do understand they have, they have a plan, a career pathway that they're looking forward to, and we're going to support that, because they're on our radar. And they know that. We tell them that all the time.
And I will say that our principals and assistant principals, who are already really engaging in the work, they interview stronger, because they're interviewing based on their competencies and skills. And it's really starting to show in our interview process, because we've redesigned some of our, the way we interview for instructional specialists, assistant principal and principal roles. And they really do score higher.
Yes, Ms. Corley.
I just want to thank you, Dr. Gutierrez and Dr. White, because for a long time, I think we have been talking about leadership. We talk about how it's kind of the linchpin in terms of moving schools forward. But I really am thankful that we're actually kind of getting boots on ground and providing this leadership opportunity. Because I think you are right when you said that you can be a leader from any seat that you sit in. And I think that these leadership skills are best when taught. So if they're intentional, if, yeah, if someone is intentional in terms of these leadership skills. And so I just, I really want to thank you. I want to thank you guys for all, and the administration, for all their work that they're doing, because this really is, you know, Trustee Davis was talking about, how are we going to keep them here? And I'm like, yes, we need to keep them here. You know, we're, this is some high-level investment that we're making into our people. And I think that it's going to make them very attractive. So, thank you.
I just also want to say, I love the fact that you said, we don't need pockets of greatness. We kind of need a system of greatness. And I think I'm all for that. So I thank you guys, because we need to stop the pockets, and we need to get it district-wide. So I think, I'm thankful for that.
Thank you, guys. If you have any feedback to help us make our programs better, let us know, and we will take that feedback in, use it to make some future decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Kincanon, review of the district's vision, mission, and goals.
Okay, so that's a good segue to the vision, mission, and goals, as Mr. Sykes said. We engaged in a process in the spring of 2020 to rewrite the district's vision and mission statement. Few people knew what the vision and mission statement were at that time. So we spent a lot of time talking about it with our administrators, and then we brought that forward to the board for review. And we're really pleased with the mission and vision statement that was developed. The mission of Waco ISD is to provide an educational foundation that empowers and values all. And the vision is to grow students and staff to create a better future for all. And that, the intent of the mission and the vision really came from our leaders, who want to grow kids, but they want to grow, too. And so that's really kind of how that organically came to be. And so we review those statements each year, and prior to the development of the district improvement plan and the campus improvement plans. And so I'm bringing that forward to you this evening, and also our 10 goals that are in the district improvement plan. And these are the overarching goals for the district that have been developed. These are, I'm recommending that we move forward with the same 10 from last year, because we're still working on those. When you see the district improvement plan in August, it will look different, because some of the objectives and activities to achieve those goals will have been tweaked and/or added to or changed since last year. But you can see those there, those 10. If you want to read those, we can. Otherwise, we'll move forward. That leadership capacity, one is there. Build capacity for school leadership. We're tackling number 10 with our facilities' planning process. That work will continue. You can see, I'm kind of going bottom-up now, aren't I? Technology, safety, coordinating all of our resources for academic achievement, working on curriculum, improving our campus ratings, retaining our teachers, engaging our families. Do you all have any questions about those goals, or the vision or mission statement?
So in the campus improvement plan, the campuses will tell us how they plan on reaching, oh, 10 of these goals?
Exactly.
Okay.
So you'll have a district improvement plan, so from a high level. My team and I will write that and present that to you on how, at the district level, what we're doing. And then each campus is tasked with doing the same thing for their school.
Madam President, I move that we approve the vision, mission, and goals for 2021, '22 as presented.
A second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Vedanya. Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor of the mission and vision as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done. Passage unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Next item.
All right. Next item is to talk about a resolution. Sorry, I don't have the title of that right in front of me.
I'm sorry. Resolution reaffirming the board's commitment to act intentionally to dismantle- Sorry. Resolution reaffirming the board's commitment to act intentionally to dismantle institutional racism. Dr. Kincanon.
Okay. There has been a bill, House Bill 3979, that has drawn a lot of attention from parents and community members, and statewide, over the last several weeks. And that bill could restrict how teachers can discuss current events and limit our ability to require training for employees on racism. So I was discussing this bill with my team this past week, and our chief of staff, Kyle DeBeere, suggested that we might present a resolution for the board's consideration. You all have that in your packet. And so I'm going to ask Mr. DeBeere to come up and review that with you.
Thank you. About a year ago, Dr. Kincanon emailed district employees committing to invest her energy in the work of dismantling racism, especially in our schools and our classrooms. Last fall, this board made a similar commitment resolving to act intentionally to dismantle institutional racism on behalf of the children and community you serve. At the heart of the concerns that we have heard, I think there's a question. If House Bill 3979 becomes law, how, will it somehow prevent us from following through on those commitments? Or perhaps phrased a little differently, how can you dismantle institutional racism if talking about race and racism is optional? And at its heart, the proposed resolution we're asking you to consider is an effort to reaffirm our commitment as a district to doing the work. House Bill 3979, and you have a copy of the Senate Committee's substitute text and amendments on the days, if you're looking for the legislation itself, consists of two sections. The first section directs the State Board of Education to include 13 topics and several subtopics in the state's list of essential knowledge and skills for the social studies curriculum. While there are certainly questions about what has and has not been included in that list, the more problematic section of the bill for us is what comes next. First, that section of the bill says that a teacher may not be compelled to discuss a particular current event, or widely debated, or currently controversial issue of public policy or social affairs. And if they do, that they must include, quote, "contending perspectives" without giving difference to any one perspective. This language is so vague and overly broad that it is not clear at all what is or is not covered by the legislation. And in the absence of greater clarity, we fear that some teachers might feel it is necessary to avoid discussions of current events, or race, or sex entirely. Next, the bill prohibits school districts from requiring certain training for employees or including certain concepts in courses. And I would note here that the term "course" seems to be used very broadly to refer both to those things that they're talking about in the context of employees, types of training orientation, but also to any courses for students. Here, again, the language is so vague that it could potentially include almost any discussion of race or racism. And will, at a minimum, if it doesn't preclude those conversations, certainly invite conflict about what is or isn't prohibited, and whether or not a particular conversation in an employee training session in a classroom was something that shouldn't have happened because of this legislation. I think, taken in its totality, the overarching message of the bill appears to be that conversations about race and racism are optional, that people can simply opt out of confronting these difficult topics. And while that might be more comfortable for people who look like me, it won't do anything to advance the work of dismantling racism that we've committed to as a district. The proposed resolution and its structure begins by repeating and reaffirming the commitments that we've already made as a district. It observes that challenge, that dismantling institutional racism requires having candid, sometimes difficult conversations about historic racism and current events. And then it expresses opposition to House Bill 3979, citing that it's likely to hinder those conversations if the bill becomes law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeBeere. Does anybody have a question?
Yeah, so-
Mr. Davis.
So equity, diversity, and inclusion training, basically, we'll have the option to either have our staff go through that or not, correct?
Well, what it says is that school districts can't require training that touches on race, and then proceeds to give some of these different descriptions of what the training might look like. But the descriptions are, quite frankly, all over the map. So I think a not unreasonable interpretation is that, that you would, if you offered training on diversity, equity, and inclusion, that an employee could conclude based on this bill, that that training was optional. And quite frankly, I think we're dissecting this bill in greater detail tonight than almost anyone who is deciding whether or not a training's optionable for them will. They're going to hear snippets in the news. And so if, looking at the language of the bill, we can't determine clearly what is or isn't prohibited, I think, you know, the understanding that's broadly available of the bill is likely to invite even more conflict.
And so in the classroom, it would be a teacher option. We have a lot of historic things that are passing right now, a lot of, yeah, a lot of crazy things. But so a teacher will have the option not to discuss that in the classroom because of this. So what, how do, if we're standing up to end racism, and we're dismantling these systems, what is WISD's answer to this? How do we get, how do we continue to dismantle racism? How do we continue to educate our kids? How do we do that? That's my question.
Well, I think we need to continue having conversations about both historic racism and current events, and the interconnection between the two. And that's, really, that's the reason that we brought this forward for the board's consideration.
And we'll still be able to, though. We'll still be able to continue their work.
So I think that there will inevitably, if this bill passes, be conflict about, between employees who don't want to participate in those conversations, or between parents who feel that their child shouldn't have participated in those conversations, because the bill is so unclear about what it's trying to prevent. You know, in some respects, it seems as if the legislature, in rushing to score political points, has failed to really think through what this looks like for a classroom teacher. You know, when you think just about our district, you know, and the number of teachers who, on a daily basis, would be expected in each class to gauge whether or not something was a topic that was covered by this legislation, and then what was required of them. I think the end result is that a lot of teachers might just decide to play it safe, essentially, and not engage in any conversations about current events, or race, or sex.
So what would the district's response to that be? If we have some teachers who are deciding not to have that discussion, and some that are, what would be our response? Because our position is to dismantle racism, and to make sure we're putting these connections together. What is our response? Will we allow, well, we have to allow the teachers to make that option, but will we, is that something that we'll be asking in the interview process? Or will we be having these discussions with current employees and employees that we're going to add to the district? Like, I'm just trying to figure out-
Yeah, so I think three things, right? First, you're absolutely right, that the position that seems to be staked out in the law is that that becomes totally optional for the teacher to decide whether or not they want to have those conversations. The second is, it's almost certain, if this does become law, that it will be challenged by, you know, there have been some associations, teachers' associations, other professional associations, that have hinted that they're looking in that direction, some school districts around the state. So it may be a situation where it becomes law, and some of those questions about what does this mean, or is this even constitutional or appropriate, are decided through the courts. And then third, I think, you know, regardless, we want to empower students. That's part of the mission statement that we've adopted for the district. And empowering all, including our students and teachers, means empowering them to have conversations about where we are and how we got here. So we would certainly encourage it, but we would be precluded by this legislation from saying that a teacher who was covered would have to talk about current events in a classroom if those events were controversial, or that an employee would have to engage in training that would be prohibited by the legislation.
This is my last question, because I'm sure there's other questions. I see, you learned about the Civil Rights Movement. So how do you not talk about racism, or address racism, and talk about the Civil Rights Movement? How do you talk about Dr. King? I've been reading this, Frederick Douglass. How do you talk about Cesar Chavez? How do you talk about these people and these events, and you don't discuss racism? So is the curriculum team, whoever's over instruction, have they started to think about how these things will be taught in the classroom?
So I think there's, there is certainly some incoherence within the language of the legislation itself, and in relationship between the legislation and the existing Texas essential skills and knowledge, which, you know, at different levels, asks for students to be, develop the capacity to make connections between current events and historical events. So certainly, the next step in all of this, with respect to those items that are outlined to be included in the TEACs, would be for the State Board of Education to actually develop the TEACs and what grade levels they're at. And then we would look at those changes in the curriculum and go from there. the curriculum and go from there. But I think that, yeah, there is, I think that underscores the lack of clarity to this proposed legislation.
Very confusing. Any other questions?
No, I just make an opposite...
Yeah, Mr. DeBeere.
Oh, rarely, if ever, come to the defense of our friends in Austin. We're kind of going at them with both barrels here, which is fine. I'm going to go off whatever a group decides that we ought to do. I'm with it. I'm just not ready to assign nefarious intent to their actions. I mean, I think it's poorly worded. Like you said, there's a lot of potentially, in my reading of 3979, I just, I don't see an intentional desire to prevent discussions of race and its impact, you know, but I don't have as fertile a brain as you do. Maybe you can see something I can't, and I'm willing to go with that. But I just, like you said, I just think they did maybe a hurried, sloppy job. I'm not sure what end they were trying to affect, but if ultimately we feel like it's going to have a chilling effect on discussing these issues in classrooms, then certainly that's a problem.
Did you highlight the part of it that you feel like where we're getting this conclusion from, maybe? So I want all of us to have a clear mind when we're talking about this and understand. So maybe could you point to us the specific wording that gives us, gives you this conclusion?
Absolutely. Well, you know, I would, just to underscore Mr. DeBeere's comments, I would not claim that I could read the intent in anyone's heart and certainly not in the legislators that are in Austin this session, but I do think the practical effect would be to hinder these conversations. And I think that because if you look at the legislation, in the copy you have, the section that the resolution deals with most directly begins on line nine on page four. And I think for teachers in the classroom, the two sections that are important are items one and two under line nine. A teacher may not be compelled to discuss a particular current event or widely debated and currently controversial issue of public policy or social affairs. And then, a teacher who chooses to discuss a topic described by subdivision one, what I just read, shall, to the best of the teacher's abilities, strive to explore the topic from diverse and contending perspectives without giving deference to any one perspective. So two things. I think that definition of what is optional in a classroom, and in particular in a social studies classroom, is incredibly broad and could encompass an infinite number of items. And secondly, I think that interplay of, once you talk about one of these things, which you may or may not be able to discern what things legislators intended to be covered by the legislation, then you have to meet this particular standard, it's a lot easier to say, I don't want to inadvertently cross that line and not go far enough in showing both sides and just avoid anything that you think falls in those categories. But I also think the idea of presenting contending perspectives without giving deference to any one perspective may be problematic for some of our teachers as well. You know, you take any number of examples where violence has been perpetuated towards some sort of political aim or with some sort of manifesto behind it, whether it's the El Paso shooting where the shooter leaves behind a manifesto, or the Islamic State pursuing international violence and affairs to try and pursue an agenda. Do we really expect in those situations, and it would seem, just the simple reading of the text that the legislature does, for a teacher to give essentially equal weight to all those perspectives? And I think that's a difficult situation to put a teacher in as well, to say that, you know, whether you're, when you're talking about something, we tend to, I guess I would say this, we tend sometimes in social media or in cable news to present everything as having two sides and being a heated debate. I'm not sure that everything really does have two sides that have equal weight attached to it. A lot of things have. There are a lot of places where we want teachers to present a full range of opinion, but I don't know that we want to ask our teachers essentially to play devil's advocate for some viewpoints that they may find morally abhorrent.
So just for example, so a teacher could be teaching about the Civil Rights Movement and have a discussion about the Klan, the Ku Klux Klan, and they have to give their students reason why they were justified in the acts that they did, just as well as why they weren't, or why those were harmful, or just like, like you said, slavery, you have to give your class reasons for slavery and discuss to a minority, majority district of students why these things were good as well as why they were bad. So that's the issue that I'm seeing here. And I feel like we have to make a firm statement against these things, especially if we're going to say we're a district that is committed to dismantling racism. It can't be a passive thing. We have to make a bold statement.
So I think broadly that that absolutely captures some of the lack of clarity in the bill, you know, in fairness to the legislators. In the specific example of the Klan, that is, in the list of things that they want added to the TEACs above, that the Klan would be presented along with the ways in which it was morally wrong. But as you move into anything that falls under that umbrella of current events, I think that is absolutely a concern. And then the second point in asking about specific sections, specific language in the legislation that's concerned, of concern, I would just point to the bottom of page four, starting at line 27. A teacher, administrator, or other employee of a state agency, school district, or open enrollment charter school may not, A, be required to engage in training, orientation, or therapy that presents any form of race or sex stereotyping, or blame on the basis of race or sex. And again, this is vaguely worded in a way that certainly, I think, will create conflict between people who don't want to participate in certain trainings over whether or not that's covered. But secondly, I think it can cover a broad range of things that we want to talk about, including implicit bias, which has 30 years of neurological and psychological research to support it as a concept, but potentially is covered here, and I think is an important topic that we want to address when we talk about culturally responsive teaching and helping teachers who may come from a different background of our students think through the things that may be barriers to connecting with our students and how they can be culturally responsive and build stronger relationships with their students. I think there's some other worrisome things in the legislation, but those are the two that I think are most problematic.
Just got to be real intentional on who we're hiring in the district now, because they may not get to get this training. As far as this Black Magic book right here, they wouldn't, they would have an option to say, I don't want to read it, or I don't want to be included in the discussion on diversity training for a very diverse district. So I think moving forward, we have to be very intentional on who we're allowing in front of our students, especially because we won't be able to control what they're saying or how they're saying it, or the kind of trainings they're getting. Just, we just have to be very intentional on who we're allowing in front of our students.
Ms. Porterway?
Yeah, Mr. DeBeere, and I'm not quite sure if you know the answer to this. You probably do, but I was just wondering, you know, on sensitive topics, you know, we're talking specifically with social studies, are parents notified if a topic is sensitive? Are they, are parents notified that that discussion is going to be happening so they can do follow-up with them, or is that...
You know, certainly there are conversations with parents about the curriculum and around some topics. Now, every, you know, I think one of the scenarios that this is kind of intended to preempt maybe in the legislature, or at least how it reads, is you're in a social studies class talking about, I actually read an example from a, in the Texas Tribune, that a teacher in the Dallas area used, and she said, we're talking about the Fourth Amendment and unlawful search and seizure, and a student references the death of Breonna Taylor. So in this context, that certainly fits into controversial current event, publicly debated is the type of thing that's concluded. And the teacher said, these are the opportunities that allow us to make history relevant and to draw connections between the historical content and things that students are familiar with, experiencing, seeing in their own lives. And I think this legislation in that case, and this was the point the teacher would make, would make the teachers less likely to make those sorts of connections. And those conversations that come up in tying a current event that may be controversial to a historical study are not the types of things necessarily that a teacher is going to, particularly with older students, be able to always predict. And so while certainly we want our parents to be engaged in what's happening in our classrooms, to understand the curriculum, I don't think it's possible to predict every instance that would be the type of thing that this legislation seems to want to address.
There are very few things that are, that are required by policy to seek parental permission from teaching if they're in the TEACs. I can think of sex education as one, that you would be required to seek approval from parents. There is some policy around parental rights where parents can seek to opt out of perhaps participating in a particular book study. I'd have to refresh my memory on the exact wording of that policy, but there are very few instances of, you know, mandates that we would have to seek permission from parents on topics.
Good questions, comments? Is there any further discussion? I happen to be present at the legislature the day that I think maybe this, they took their first commentary on this particular bill, and I was in the Education Committee that day, and it was really interesting because the debate was pretty robust, and there was quite a lot of pushback from the chair of the committee and also a couple of the members. And so I'm really intrigued at how this, how we got here. Because after witnessing that conversation and discussion and pushback from those happened to be, well, yep, all men, it's just curious, you know, I guess unless you're in Austin every day, there's no way you can really figure, I don't even know if you're there every day, you could figure out the sausage is made, but how did we get here from that first reading is really interesting to me. And just a casual observer, that day, I thought, well, this will never, this won't go anywhere.
And so, yeah, there's a version that's passed the House. The Senate offered a committee substitute, and now we're waiting to see if the House will accept the Senate's changes as is, forward it to the governor, or if the Senate, or if the House will ask for a conference committee.
Okay. Any further conversation, discussion?
This will affect more of this race too, but I, this won't just affect discussions on racism. It could be anything as far as gun control, LGBTQ rights. We have a, we have a population of LGBTQ students we have to think about as well, and just any, anything, just multiple things that this could affect and hinder the educational process in the classrooms. And I just think we just really need a solid plan for our teachers and anybody that's in front of our students on how they're going to be able to deal with this, if it does pass or when it does pass, from what it looks like to me. So I think we just need to start developing a very strong plan and figure out where we're going to stand when this does pass, if it does.
I think that challenge remains, either way, pass or no. I mean, I think the thing that you're talking about is, you know, it's, there's no easy way. Even right now, I don't, but, yeah.
I think the resolution, the resolution is a statement, right? That we want to continue the work that we've started and that we want our teachers to participate in professional development that is aligned to our values, and that this language is vague, and that we, you know, we have intent to move forward with the work that we've started.
And I'm waiting for a motion.
I'm moving to accept the administration's recommendation. There aren't two places to sign.
Thank you, Mr. DeBeere. I'll entertain a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Is there any further discussion?
Beat it into the ground.
Everybody good? Okay. All those in favor of the resolution as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. DeBeere, for your work on that. Next is review and discuss long-range facilities planning. Dr. King, Cannon.
This is the board's standing item to review and discuss the long-range facilities planning process. We finished our last community advisory committee meeting on, was that Monday? On Monday evening, and at that meeting, the committee consensus was, or priorities were the rebuild of Waco High School, the rebuild of Carver Middle School, which would then incorporate Indian Spring Middle School, a rebuild of Tennyson Middle School, and then a rebuild of Kendrick Elementary, which would then, and renovations to South Waco Elementary, and those two schools would incorporate the Alta Vista Elementary student population. Our financial advisor reviewed bond debt capacity information with the committee. The committee answered a question regarding the amount that they felt that the district, that the community, that the board should ask the community for, and we've since sent out a press release with the committee's recommendations for those projects, and that press release is really based on those guiding principles of the work that we've done so far around equity and our educational vision to modernize our facilities. So with that, I would be happy to let you all have a conversation about the work of the committee, and we could discuss next steps.
What are our next steps?
Next, our next step is to hear the formal long-range facilities master plan. Our architects have taken all of the information from those eight meetings and compiled that into a formal document that Jared Sturzinger will review with the board on June the 10th. And then we will continue to refine the financial piece. We'll get our certified tax values, and then the board will make a decision on whether or not to move forward with the committee's recommendation, and you all, you know, it's your, you're, you have the ability to move forward with $376.1 million bond program, or you can modify that in any way that you would like. And then the bond election, election, you have to make a decision about whether or not you want to have it in November or May, and then if you want to have it in November, then we would bring, work with our bond counsel to bring the election order to you in August.
Are we looking at ways to protect our senior citizens from tax increases? Have we examined that?
You're, if you're 65 years or older, your tax values are frozen for, I forgot the rule.
Unless you're modeling the house, right?
Yeah. Cheryl, what's the rule on, you're frozen on your, so your taxes...
It's the rate.
Yeah, the rate is frozen. Not the value, but the rate. Right.
Because they, even if they make renovations to the house, it's not out of work for...
No, you make renovations to your house, your value is going to go up, but if you, whatever your value is on that company's... whatever your value is on that company's, it's fine, it's safe, unless you have.
Okay, so what's your, the appraised value and the rate? Stay put. Okay.
Repeat that? Appraised value and the rate stay put?
Oh, no, this probably does apply to you. The.
We can, we can research that and bring that back to you more formally.
That one nice.
We'll research that, Mr. Gillery.
Lucky for you, I think it went over his head.
Make sure we present that accurately, but there is, your property values are frozen at sixty-five.
The amount you gave us, is that for all of the schools, or what is that amount for?
Yes, okay, so the three hundred seventy-six point one million includes all of those projects. It is a twelve point four nine cent tax increase on a hundred dollars of assessed valuation, which is about twelve dollars and twenty-three cents a month for the average homeowner in Waco ISD.
And we can approve all or part of it? Right. Part of the, we can either approve all the projects or only some of them?
Correct. We, and we aren't making any decisions tonight. Tonight's just a conversation. But as we move forward, then the board will decide whether we approve some or all of it, or if you want to add anything else to the bond program, and whether or not you want to have it in November or May.
For how long would that effectively wipe out all the bonding capacity? I mean, like, next to bond election?
Well, you're capped at fifty cents on your INS rate, and so I don't know what year you would, we wouldn't hit fifty cents. So it would really take a lot to do that. You wouldn't wipe out your capacity at all.
Okay, I know.
Yeah. Because you're, we're sitting at twenty-six cents on our.
I thought we were getting close, you know?
No, we're not close.
Yeah.
We have twenty-four cents.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, and we're talking about, this is talking about twelve?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And that's twelve with a very conservative model, so, you know, that's, you know, our financial advisor has, you know, he's hedged a little on, on the conservative side. If things go better, it could be less of an impact on our taxpayers, but you certainly want to be as conservative as you can so that you're, you know, so that you're clear with your taxpayers in case, you know, it does end up being twelve and a half cents.
Well, and I, I think that, I just want to encourage every member of the board to continue to have conversations with community members and parents and gather, you know, questions and whatever concerns you've heard, because a decision hasn't been made. And in spite of the headline of the newspaper, we still have work to do, and we have time to answer questions, we have time to get more information, if there are some things that we want, whether it's additional information from our architects, or our administration, or our financial experts. We have time to do that. So I don't want anyone to feel like they, the decision's been made, because it hasn't been. And we're the, the group of people who are tasked with making that decision. I want everyone to feel like they have enough information and, and know that you have time to ask questions and, like Mr. Gillery's, more information about tax implications, so we're all comfortable talking about it, would be very helpful. And I'm sure there will be more things that come up. But overall, the committee's work was, it was really commendable that we had sixty-five people, I think. We had, we had, you know, probably an average of sixty-five, seventy people from January who tuned in hour and a half, two hours, eight times from, so it was really impressive, and we hadn't had that level of engagement and conversation before about our facilities. It's been a long time. I think maybe, I think maybe, you know, the bond committee before the decision was made to University High School, but I don't think it was nearly as comprehensive and didn't provide this level of information, so.
I think it was a good process, but we, we want to answer your question. So I hear you, Jared, I hear you needing information on tax, taxes for senior citizens. And Jared will present the master facilities plan when he comes on June the 10th. What else do you need? Is there any other information we could provide you?
No. What Angela was talking about is for discussions with the community, is probably bringing in the business community. That's seventy-five percent of our, our tax base, DePuy's down there, so he would know that. So if it's bringing, he can probably bring in a lot of those individuals and have those discussions with them as well.
We'll, and we'll definitely have, push out lots of communication regarding any bond program that is proposed. So I would expect to be making a lot of presentations from the point of, of a bond election that's called all the way to the election, final day of the election, and we'll push out information in multiple formats.
I think the neighborhood associations would be a good point to present to, as well, to get the information out to the community.
Agreed.
Remember, businesses don't vote.
Oh, did you?
Well, I have to say the information.
You've got to be there to be registered to vote, to vote in this election.
The information that we received tonight about the ESAR funding, so I think there's so much, you know, the committee was tasked with examining this particular issue, and I think what happened when we had that level of engagement and leaders from our community all together to talk about this, then they wanted to talk about a lot of other things, instruction, student performance, student outcomes, and, and so it was a bit of a challenge to not be able to include all of that information for them as well, so they understand that we're not just working on our facilities, but we're actually working on all the other things we've talked about tonight. So, anyway, that, it was almost like, you know, at the end of it, I thought, gosh, I wish I could have this group engaged and interested enough to, to hear the stimulus plan fund, or the aspiring academy, you know, all the other things that we have going on. So perhaps, you know, there'll be some opportunities in the event the bond is called and you, and you go out to give information. That'll be a way to get more information out to our community about what's going on.
Sure. We're happy to do that.
The HVAC funds that are being used and the ESAR funds, they won't be used on the schools we're about to make new schools, right? So none of that HVAC money's not going to be used at Waco High.
Right, so should the board call an election, then we, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't go put new air conditioning system at Kendrick if we're going to build a new Kendrick, right?
Unless the air conditioning goes out.
Unless it goes out, right. Mrs. Lozano definitely doesn't want to work in a school building in a hundred-degree weather without air conditioning. We'll take, take care of it.
So what is the, at what meeting would we, are you thinking we would be making the decision?
So the deadline is in August. I want to say it's, I was thinking thirteen, but thirteen or fourteen, August. So it would be in August, and we'd have to look at the timing. We might have to schedule a special meeting if, if it doesn't align with our regularly scheduled meeting, so let me check. Our regular meeting is August twenty-sixth, but I have calendared a special board meeting for August twelfth, for the budget, so we could also call the election at that meeting.
Any other comments, questions?
I'd say I would just add that I sat with the Guama Advisory Board today, and there was a lot of excitement about bond projects from that group, because it means a lot of jobs, right? For the community, all construction. And so they were very excited about the prospect of building new schools in Waco ISD, as they should be.
Okay.
That's your cue.
Is this? This is not on.
Nope, that's not on there.
Okay, thank you. All right. Announcements. Mr. DeBeere, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Monday is, of course, a staff and student holiday and observance of Memorial Day. On Tuesday, June first, registration will open for the 2021-2022 school year. And then on June 10th, which is your next meeting, we will also be marking the last day of this school year. So it's a, it's a sprint from here to there, and we'll look forward to talking to you at that meeting about some of the summer activities that are coming up after that. Thank you.
We are adjourned. Good night.